Now, before we go any further, please order. Before we go any further, unfortunately, we lived through an unfortunate event this week that occurred in Fredericton. And on behalf of the Town Council of the City of Clarence and Rockland, as well as all of its residents, I'd like to offer my most sincere condolences to those families, friends, and acquaintances of constables Frank Ostello and Sarah Burns, who are members of the Fredericton Police Force who made the ultimate sacrifice last Friday, and their service shall never be forgotten, and we'll remember them as being heroes.
...the Fredericton Police Force officers, the first responders, the city of Fredericton, and all others affected by this tragedy. Thank you to all who put their lives at risk for us. We are immeasurably indebted to them for their dedication and line of duty. Please join me for a minute of silence, please.
Merci. Thank you. All right. So I'd like to have a motion so that the closed meeting be closed, be it resolved, so that the closed meeting be adjourned, so that we may return to the regular meeting of Town Council. Moved and seconded by Councillor Zant, all those in favor, carried. You have the e-scribe documents in English before you. Mr. Grimal, you have this before you? You have these documents before you, do you? The electronic documents? So you want me to do this in English? No, no. Fine. Well, the first resolution.
...dismiss the claim against DVD Development Incorporated, including potential claim costs of $345,454 plus $5,000 in legal costs. And that council authorized the Director of Infrastructure and Engineering to use the letter of credit of the amount of $175,000 that DVD Development Inc. provided to this city to pay for the outstanding issues associated with this project.
Seconded by Councillor Zant, all those in favor, carried. Thank you then. The other matter, Mr. Grimal.
...improve the draft plan of subdivision submitted by CH Clenac Construction for the estates of Eugene de Violette, file number D12123, with the conditions of approval listed under section 7 of Report numero Amé-18-30-R on June 18, 2018, against the advice of the Infrastructure and Planning Department. And whereas the Rockland Golf Club submitted an appeal of council's decision to the local planning appeals tribunal, that council engaged the services of an external planner and legal counsel to represent it before the local planning appeals tribunal for case number PL180621.
Seconded by Councillor Schwanier, any questions? All those in favor, carried then, thank you. I believe that's all. That takes care of matters that were discussed and now voted upon in the closed meeting. Question period. If anyone has a question of council to ask, step forward, give us your name, your address, and go ahead. You have three minutes allotted, do you? Thank you. Members of council, your name and your address, please. Eve de Violette, 1058 Baseline Road, Mr. Mayor. I attended council meeting last fall in October during the vote, the budget vote, and concerning more precisely the ditch in between my property and my neighbors that is slowly eroding. And I had discussions with Mr. De Jardine, members of council, and people working at the infrastructure department. And the debate centers around the fact that ditches flow onto both of our properties. Those are city-operated ditches. And the debate centers around the fact that this involves private property, and the town, of city, in Clarence and Rockland is unable to help us out. I believe that's unjust, because we're the ones that paid for the costs for many years now. I've been harping on this for the past 10 years. I brought you photocopies, as well as an accompanying letter that you should read, and photos that you should take a look at. My cell phone number is on here, and I invite you to give me a call. If you'd like to consult with me, call me, and it's going to be a pleasure for me to meet with you at any time of the day, at any day whatsoever. I'll be back in about two weeks, because I know that you have a fairly packed schedule tonight. I want you to respect that, and I myself too. Please take a look at these documents, and please call me back. This is a ditch, Mr. Mayor, where a lot of water overflow stemming from the city of Clarence and Rockland seeps into and flows onto our property. Mr. de Violette, did you contact Mr. Leroux as I asked you to?
Yes, I spent two and a half hours with Eric last Friday, and he enlightened me on many questions I had. He's supposed to issue a report this week to Mrs. Collier for further action to be taken. He understands situation, he understands the nature of the law as it stands today. This is why I recommended him to you. He, even though you set foot on a municipal drain, he'll be the one to tell you what is going on. When someone sets foot on an inimical drain, everybody is called upon to pay if water seeps into it. Well, it might take Mayor De Jardine two, three, four years for this matter to be resolved, really. And there are some things that I'm not too enticed about that are wrapped around all of this dilemma. I'm ready to make what I need to do what I do. If the city of Clarence and Rockland is ready to help you out at least once, we can strengthen the side of those ditches, and I can help you. I'll leave you copies of the pictures that I'd taken. There are 10 copies of those pictures that I had occasion to take. This is a serious situation, of course, yes. We take all situations seriously. Thank you, Mr. de Violette. Anyone else who might have any questions of Town Council at this time? Fine then, thank you. Let's go on now to consent items or council members' items. Mr. Lalonde, whereas Centrade United Way Prescott Russell is organizing on the 8th of September at the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena an auction, along with the participation of many businesspeople and local businesses here in Prescott Russell and Rockland and Clarence. And whereas United Way wishes to obtain free of charge services of the arena, most popularly on Friday, September 7th, in between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to receive the merchandise, and on Saturday, on the 8th of September, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the auction per se, and on Sunday, the 9th of September, from 8:00 a.m. to 12 noon to remove the merchandise that has been purchased, be it resolved, that council offer free of charge the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena to Centrade, that will host their auction on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the stated hours. Seconded by Councillor Schwanier. Fine. Mr. Boucher, are there any other events that are planned for that day at that venue?
No, Mr. Mayor. Centrade, of course, is a very worthwhile cause to sponsor. Let me explain, Mr. Mayor. It's a huge auction that will be conducted. We're dealing with tractors, boats, cars here that will be auctioned off. These items come from Ottawa everywhere. Will there be a white BMW up for auction? No, I don't believe so. In any event, I believe it's already been reserved. All those in favor then, thank you. Item 9.2. A Bell Canada or Bell-related matter? It's item 9.2. Yes. And we are patiently waiting. All right. You can read it out if you wish. It's in English, of course, yes? No, it's in French. Read it out in English. Read it out in English.
...the 29th of the Bylaw to regulate road cuts and the reinstatement of roads within the municipality. Whereas this Bylaw specifies that a minimum security deposit of $2,000 is required for specific works identified in Schedule A of the Bylaw. And whereas several public utility agencies have historically not required or not been required to provide performance deposits until recently. And whereas there is an extensive process to release performance deposit on a work once a work has been completed. And whereas Bell Canada relies on independent subcontractors to perform its work, Bell Canada has requested that the municipality to... Sorry. Has requested the municipality to eliminate the need for contractors to provide security deposits for work on city right-of-ways. And whereas many municipalities enter into municipal access agreements with public utility agencies, wherein the agency assumes full responsibility for required restoration done by its contractors. And whereas it is appropriate to review the current Bylaw and undertake consultation with the affected public utility agencies to update the specifics of the Bylaw, be it resolved that the city of Clarence, Rockland hereby approves a moratorium on the collection of performance deposits from Bell Canada until such time as staff brings back a report and amended Bylaw as appropriate for council's consideration regarding the collection of performance deposits for public utility agencies. I think it would have been better reading the French version.
Seconded by Councillor Lalonde, any questions? Well, is that because of those that caused a lot of damage? Well, you know, they do a lot of good work, you see. The speed at which Bell works, this is to install, you know, high-speed fiber, but Bell doesn't work at high speed. But we want this to have installed. Contractors are in this area, we don't know when they'll come back. And the new ATG company will be advantaged by this. And it's going to facilitate and better coordinate those services that are offered. Yes, most of the time, that's what they do. They don't have to give a deposit to the city of Clarence and Rockland, and they've... they come up with arrangements already. I've asked them to come up with the arrangements in the same contract that Enbridge was awarded, so that they can guarantee their project.
Enbridge has been very good.
All those in favor then? When we say, for those citizens that are listening to this Town Council, the French version has not been translated. The English portion has not been translated in French. So it discriminates against Francophones.
Could they not translate to French when we're speaking in English? Or they just translate from French to English?
They should do both. Well, this is an independent translator, so if we do this at that point in time, because he's going to be charging extras to do this, we might look at this, because I've had a lot of citizens' complaints. I can discuss him, how much he'd charge more if he'd like to do this. And I know him. I'm going to ask him to come up with a good price. Good, well, that's fine. Well, Mr. Mayor, the onus would be upon administration to ensure a proper translation. The option is that when we have to read something in English, that we do so in French. We'll need a spokesperson, eh, Mr. Wilson, will we not? In this... In this situation? When Mr. Wilson learnt French, he didn't understand what a "d'or", or the word, the term "d'or" in French, had to do with "I'm granting you now the right to intervene", in any event, that's a long story. Is there an item you'd like to withdraw from consent items? Item 10, well, go ahead. Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, appearing at the regular meeting of the 13th of August be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the following minutes. 10.1 sub-A, minutes of the Committee of the Hall of June 18, 2018. 10.1 sub-B, special meeting of April 30, 2018. 10.1 sub-C, adoption of the minutes of the Special Committee of the Hall of April 30, 2018. 10.1 sub-D, adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council of June 18, 2018. All those in favor, carried. Has this been seconded? Councillor Schwanier, all those in favor, carried then, thank you. Let's go on now to committee and staff reports. Fire dispatch communication system. Mrs. Sima. Whereas local municipalities of the United Counties of Prescott and Russell are responsible for the services of provincial and protection against fires in keeping with the law. And whereas paragraph 116 sub-1 of the 2001 Municipalities Act allows municipalities to establish a communication system that would be centralized for emergency services. And whereas section 189 of the Municipalities Act that authorizes higher-level municipalities that allow the transfer to lower-tier municipalities services. And whereas the United Counties of Prescott Russell has adopted Report DG-012, 2018, with regards to the replacement of the actual communication system concerning dispatching of firefighting services. And whereas the United Counties of Prescott and Russell adopted a 2018-57 concerning the transfer of communication system for the dispatching of said services with regards to firefighting services. Be it resolved that the council of the city of Clarence and Rockland concentrates on the transfer of the communication system for the dispatching of firefighting services in keeping with the existing law and accepts to maintain its powers concerning fire prevention services in keeping with the Fire Prevention and Protection from Fires Act. Seconded by Councillor Lalonde, yes, any questions? Councillor Lalonde. Mr. Mayor, it's going to cost us. I took a look at this cost, $98,000 per year for a 10-year period. That means $980,000 it's going to cost, that's for the 10... Next 10 years. But what's happening with the contract we've entered into with the city of Ottawa? Well, that has nothing to do with this. This deals with the radio system and the communication towers that are strewn throughout the county. This deals with the radio system. So we'll continue on using our existing system, yes. But there'll be a dedicated line servicing us, as well as the city of Clarence, of the city of Ottawa, should I say. Thank you then. Other questions? All those in favor, carried then, well, thank you. Proposal for a funding request accessibility fund. Councillor Lalonde, André? Go ahead. Don't fight amongst each other, I'll have plenty for everyone. Whereas community services have received requests from residents of the Hammond community for an accessible playground. And whereas the Accessibility Fund provides grants to finance small construction renovation or retrofit projects that increase accessibility in communities. And whereas community services had to submit the grant application without the approval of city council in order to respect the grant application deadline. Be it resolved that city council approved the grant application submitted by community services to the Accessibility Fund Employment and Social Development Canada to finance an accessible playground at the Hammond Park as a result. Seconded by Councillor Levert, any questions? Questions, just a comment? I really liked the different organizations' involvement in this matter. We have two volunteers here, really. And we should make use of this as an example when we deal with the next part that is to be inaugurated, to ensure that there's complete accessibility afforded to everyone. I took a look at the designs, it's really great. They're really great, and our community is fully invested in this. You have comments, go ahead. Anick Lalonde, 272, Violette Street in Hammond. My... okay, addressing you from this particular mic. Elsa Lalonde. Again, I live at the 2145 Patricia Road in Rockland. Just to give you a brief overview of our project, Mr. Mayor. So about a year and a half, I had occasion to meet with Mackenzie, who's three and a half years old, and she's a resident of Hammond and its daughter. As myself, Mackenzie makes use of a white seat, being an active and involved resident in my community. I know how Mackenzie is facing many physical barriers. I know her dilemma when she wishes to access public venues such as parks in our community. Today, we've presented to... We'd like to present to you a project that we've been working on for the past year that will make the Hammond Park accessible to all children, as well as adults, as well as the elderly. And the initiative is to build an accessible park. This is an idea that stems from myself and my family. I know what children live through when they can't or prevented from playing with other children or having the opportunity to make friends in the community. My goal is to see Mackenzie play with other children and to make friends and to service the needs of other handicapped citizens and that need to be fully integrated within their community. Now, a year ago, we met with Jean-Luc Jumayville, because we wondered where we would start off in this particular project, in the implementation of such a project. We knew that the park was a city-operated venue. Because of Elsa, she's quite aware of all funds available through the government to fund similar type of projects. And Elsa is the one that gave us an idea to ask for a fund through Social Development and Employment Canada. We're trying to obtain a very good amount this year. This year's going to be more than last year. We're seeking $100,000 this year. So we were involved to the... at 100% in making a request for the grant that I have just alluded to. And Elsa and myself worked very, very hard, along with Jean-Luc and Martin, to ensure that this be done properly. So we're before Town Council to tell you that we are in support of the financing request. There was a deadline that needed to be respected. Last year, we missed out on that deadline, and this year, we said to ourselves we would not miss out on that deadline. There are many organizations that support us, of course. And we sought the help of the community at large also, but we could have even sought even further help if we could have, and if time would have allotted us to do so. So to give you an idea of our project and its importance to our citizens, the construction of an accessible park would be the first type of park of its nature here in the city of Clarence and Rockland. This park would allow, finally, all of those citizens, notwithstanding the handicap that they have, that these people, one out of seven, by the way, in keeping with statistics, to have at least access to one fully accessible park within our municipality. The second point I'd like to make is this, Mr. Mayor. We do recognize that this is an initiative stemming from us. And we're aware that all public areas, including municipal parks, shall have to be completely accessible in keeping with the law as of 2025. So we have to start off now. And it's a great example, but we can start off with one here. We'd like to thank you, by the way, Mr. Mayor, for the path that has been built, that winds its way through the park. It favors all of these moms and dads that push a baby carriage along. And I can tell you that my friend and I make use of this, and maybe handicapped individuals have made use of this recreational path, as well as the Bourget splash pad. Thank you for Bourget and Clarence, it's quite a boon for us. Well, on behalf of Town Council, we'd like to thank you also. There's a lot of time that was put into that. I see the finance. From the financial standpoint, there's a lot of money that you obtained, and my tip of the hat off to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could also have a letter of support from you to confirm your support for what we're doing. The second part of our funding request requires that we obtain the help of Town Council. We're trying to obtain $100,000. I believe that the resolution we've just read should afford you with support. We can also send you a letter. Well, when we knock at different doors, you know, we have nice designs and the funds that possibly are forthcoming, but we'd like to have a letter from you also, Mr. Mayor. That's fine. Secondly, we'd like to make a recommendation to you that Town Council set aside funds from its capital expenditure 2019 funding envelope to help us in implementing this project. Well, I'm going to ask you to come back in December with the new council, because right now, we're functioning under the lame duck principle right now. There are no decisions we can take, but if you come back in December, you can ask Town Council to consider your request when they formulate the new budget. If anyone has any questions, Mr. Mayor, because they don't know of what we're talking about, we've forwarded pictures of what our finished project would look like. We've been working closely with a designer. Took us quite a while to come up with the final design, but fortunately, we can succeed in coming up with a park of this type in our area. Well, the River Festival is over and done with, so we can ask Mrs. Violette to send you a letter. She has nothing to do right now. Any questions? No one? We can... all we can say is congratulations for the great work you've done. Thank you, ma'am, thank you. And good luck in the future with this particular project. Is everyone in favor then? I gather, yes? Fine. Installation of sidewalk and streetlights on Saint-Jean Street. Councillor Grimal. The council adopt Bylaw 2018-120 to authorize the clerk and the mayor to sign a contract with Landrock Excavation Incorporated for the construction of the Saint-Jean Street sidewalk and streetlights in the amount of $221,398 excluding HST. Seconded by Councillor Zant, any questions? All those in favor then, carried. Vacancy on council, let's go on with this next resolution. Mrs. Resolution, Sima.
...resignation as councillor for Ward 4 of the city of Clarence, Rockland. Be it resolved that the city of... Sorry, that the council of the city of Clarence, Rockland hereby declares the seat of the councillor of Ward 4 to be vacant. And be it also resolved that council hereby acknowledges receipt of Report Number Clerk 2018-12, which outlines the legislated requirements further to declaring the vacancy. And be it further resolved that council hereby declares that the seat for councillor Ward 4 will, option A, remain vacant for the remainder of this term of council, or option B, be filled according to option B1, or option B2, or option B3.
Seconded by, I do have a question, go ahead, Mrs. Schwanier. Go ahead, Mrs. Chouagnier. Could you please read it back again in French? Whereas, shall Bill Anglet hand his resignation? Be it resolved that council hereby acknowledges receipt of report, and be it further resolved that council hereby declares the seat for councillor Ward Four? And be declared that his seat be declared vacant, and be it resolved also that council, that Ward Four seat be, remain vacant for the rest of this council's term, or option B, be filled according to option B one, or option B two, or option B three? Seconded by Councilor Chouagnier. All right. Now, I would move that this seat remain vacant. We still have about two months remaining. We're in a lame duck situation right now. We're, so the seat will remain vacant as an option? Do you want me to move this? Yes, I'll second this. All those in favor then? Is this subject to discussion? We see, this was moved, so we have to vote on the motion that is before us? Fine. Of course, it stands to reason, well, I'm leaning towards the adoption of option B one. The residents have elected a representative in two thousand and fourteen. They had to withdraw from council, the council table for health reasons. I believe that we should offer the possibility the, to this councillor, because he was elected by the residents. He's now in full health, and I don't know if that would resolve our lame duck problem, because we'd have at least seventy-five percent of those councillors that are coming back or that will reapply to come back to table, to the table. If that's not the case, well, if this was a situation that was either a permanent type situation at this time, it's not, we have a vacant seat, and I believe that we should offer the opportunity to the councillor that campaigned in two thousand and fourteen to come back and at least offer him the possibility to end his term. Well, Councilor Zant?
Well, I do have a different opinion than that of my colleagues. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Simonot. We worked together. I consider him as a friend. Unfortunately, being in an election period right now, we're sticking our nose into the businesses, into the business of a ward where people living in that ward should be given the choice to vote for the one who will represent their interests. The candidates have, Mrs. Simonot gave, did good work when he was there. Unfortunately, he resigned at that time, and it's a time the population, the population at large should be called upon to make its choice. I'm entirely in agreement with what Councilor Zant is stating. Because we're in the midst of an elec, of an election right now, and because we're in a democratic society, we'd afford Mr. Simonot a couple of months to end his mandates. Mandate? Well, we, it was a democratic process still in two thousand and fourteen when he was elected, yes, but Mrs. Chouagnier was absent for many months, and we op, operated, we dealt with matters fairly judiciously. Mrs. Chouagnier? Well, we're talking about less than two months. By the time this individual is sworn in again, it, it will take a bit of time, so it's fair to state that this is a delicate matter. If there was about eight months to a year left, then it might be another matter, but with the two months left, I don't see the benefit of filling this seat at this point in time. Any other questions? So I'm going to ask people to vote on option A. Who's in favor of option one, or A? Thank you. So, carry. Renewal for the recreational complex loan. Councilor Levert. Be resolved that bylaw number two thousand and eighteen dash one nineteen, being a bylaw to authorize the renewal of a loan in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the recreational complex with the TD Bank for a five-year term and a twenty-year amortization provision be adopted. Seconded by Councilor Lallonde. Any questions? Where do we come up with this three point two percent figure? Yes, good question. Mr. Lallonde?
The rate was confirmed today. The report stated that it hovered around the three percent mark, and the rate was confirmed today. The resolution stated three percent. Well, it was modified by some point two percentage points. Obviously, we weren't handed the revised document. It's unfortunate that Mr. Denoye was not able to be quicker on the draw and to give us a revised document. Mr. Mayor, I had occasion to consult with Mr. Denoye and ask him why the case popular was not part and parcel of the group that tendered, but they did not answer. I asked them why this was today, and they said, well, we sent your request to headquarters, and they did not answer that request, but they were, the case popular was contacted. I just want to make sure that those people tuning in are made aware that the case popular was contacted. It's unfortunate that we have a point two percent discrepancy, especially when you're applying for a mortgage. You have a freeze imposed for a couple of weeks, waiting for you to take a decision whether you'll take that mortgage or not, but this matter never falls on the right side when the city of Clarence and Rockland is involved. Yes, unfortunately, that's the situation. All those in favor then? Carry. Thank you. Let's go on to bylaws. Are there any bylaws you'd like to withdraw from the list of bylaws? Well, twelve point four, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw for individual discussions, others, and also, I'd like to withdraw twelve point eight, so that we might discuss it further. Fine. Councilor Levert? We're into bylaws. I was just keeping the lengthy document to be read for you. Be it resolved. So we're removing twelve point four and twelve point seven? Yes. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. Twelve point one, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two, to adopt the Site Plan Control Area bylaw and Site Plan Processing Guide. Item twelve point two, two thousand and eighteen dash eighty-one, to sign a contract with CSW for revitalization of Laurier Street, the design stage. Item twelve point three, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash one oh nine, amendment to zoning bylaw thirty-one eighty-eight Champlain Road and part of thirty-two ten dash thirty-two thirty-two Champlain Road. Item twelve point five, two thousand and eighteen dash one one one, zoning bylaw eight oh one Saint-Jean Street. Twelve point six, two thousand and eighteen dash one thirteen, removal of part lot control block two eight eight of Plan fifty M dash three oh eight. And item twelve point seven, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash one fourteen, to appoint members to the Public Library Board. Other I, bylaw item twelve point nine, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash one sixteen, to adopt an emergency plan. And item twelve point ten, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash one seventeen, to sign a contract with HL Engineering for the design of water main replacement on Laurier-Guardo and Puyat Streets. All those in favor? Councilor Zant? Thank you. Let's go on now to twelve point four. Let's revisit this one. Amendment to zoning bylaw. Be it resolved that the zoning bylaw concerning thirty-two ten dash thirty-two thirty-two Champlain Road be amended. Fine. Adopted. Thank you. And be adopted as a result. I second, I seconded this for discussion purposes. Fine, let's go on. When I had occasion to take a look at the accompanying documents, Mr. Mayor, the first copy of Schedule A bears out a lot land, or delineates a lot land configuration here. Now, if I take a look at page two forty-two, the lot land disappears all of a sudden, and there are two designs. Which one of the two designs is the proper one? One with, or the other one not? You'll have to ask this one in English, because, Mr. Lallonde, Mr. Lallonde, you'll have to ask this in English, because Mr. Darch is here tonight to answer questions for us tonight.
Schedule A of page two thirty-nine. If we accept that, we would create a lot land at the RU section. Champlain, oui?
Yes. Now, if I take a look at the other one on page two forty-two, there are no lot lands, but Marcel is at the back here. Oh, the street runs along there. That's Marcel. Well, thank you then, because we weren't able to see Marcel on this particular document. Fine. No, we're done. It's all right. Don't worry, Mr. Darch. We are done with this. All those in favor? Carry then. Thank you. Yes. Fine. I'd seconded that this be adopted. Let's go on now to item twelve point eight. Be it resolved? Two thousand and eighteen dash one fifteen, that's the Christian Labour Association. Be it resolved that bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash one fifteen be adopted. I'll second this for discussion purposes. That, that deals with an agreement with the Christian Labour Association of Canada Volunteer Firefighters. I took a look at page two eighty-two. It deals with the collective agreement, item three point five. You'll have to proceed in English, because Mr. Darch is here tonight. Which, to answer any questions? Page two eighty-two, item three zero five? Page five, down at the bottom of the three hundred and forty-two page document, well, item, or section three point five.
Days when used in disagreement in connection to timeline shall exclude Saturday, Sunday, and days of which the employers administration officer close.
I hope that the firefighters will be on duty on those days. Yes, yes.
The weekly hours is seven days a week.
This is for the volunteer firefighters?
That's right.
The term working days or days when used in the screen typically refers to agreements processes. So if the volunteer union decided to file agreements with the city, there's X number of days for them to do so, and X number of days for us to respond. If administration isn't working, it makes it more difficult for us to respond during those days. So the intent behind that terminology is just to mean that that's working days when myself or Madame Collier are available to respond to agreements if that allows it.
So, fine, fine. Thank you then.
Page the agreement eleven, seven oh seven. Volunteers who have successfully passed the regional training program shall, shall be entitled to receive a one-time lump sum payment of five hundred dollars upon successful completion of the provisional period. Was that there before? It was there?
Yeah.
It was assist.
Three zero with six.
Two point four assist. Twenty-three point four is okay. Good. Three sixteen. I think that's the last one I have. Do we have that? It's page thirty-nine, item number two. The employees have remained and maintained an inventory of excess bunker gear in assorted sizes to use when primary gear is out of service. We have that already?
We're working to build that number up. Yes, we have some in stock.
Some in stock.
In each location?
Yes.
For each fireman?
Sorry, through the mayor to the councillor's question. Yes, we have some in stock at the beginning of this year with the hiring of some new volunteers, which council had approved in this budget cycle. We were very, very thin on spare gear. With this year's purchase of bunker gear, gave us some extra stuff that is still good, that we are distributing among the stations, and as we continue to move forwards with that cycle, the expectation is we'll, we'll be able to get to that point through our operational budget.
Nothing like used gear. Thank you, chief.
Okay, that's it?
That's it then. All those in favor? Carry then. Be resolved that bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash one eighteen be deemed a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council for the thirteenth of August. Seconded by Councilor Chouagnier. Arrangement called at eight twelve P M. Let's take a ten-minute break, and after that, we have a meeting set up with people on the other side of the street, shall we not? So we're gonna start off with the adoption of another measure. Mrs. Willet has just told me what to do again, or a suggestion. We'll call the committee of the whole meeting open, and then we'll proceed with the meeting with those folks on the other side of the street that are waiting for us. So, excuse me, folks, folks, order, order, order. Just two minutes of your precious time, please. I call the committee of the whole meeting open as of eight thirteen, adoption of the agenda. I move that the agenda be adopted as presented. Seconded by Councilor Guimar. Any additions or changes? Are we keeping item four point one on the agenda? We can remove that, because we've already dealt with that particular item. Disclosures of pecuniary interests? None? That's fine. Yes, would be, by the way, that would be a good idea if we were to proceed in an early fashion, yes. Declarations of pecuniary interests? None. So, let's just cross the street now. Do you want us to deal with correspondence right now? Well, we can take a break right now and then proceed, well, we can deal with five point two and then four point one, and then deal with those later. Thank you then.